have been and will continue to offer free services, including helping families file taxes, apply for financial aid, and even helping undocumented students apply for deferred action.
Regardless of your age, your income, grades, or immigration status, when it comes to financial aid, there is some assistance for everybody.
The workshops will also come in handy this tax season, assisting families to claim their earned income tax credit, and that could mean a maximum of $6,000 back in their pockets.
I help a lot. Tough times.
There are many people who leave money back with the federal government or with state government, and we need to make sure we empower them with that education.
And with education on the resources available to them, the hope is families and students like Jose will be able to achieve their goals that much easier.
My dream's always been to be a police officer and hop out my community and move up to be a detective.
Other services include helping families enroll in covered California and connecting unbanked individuals to low-cost checking and savings accounts. Go to freetaxhelp.la.com for more information on these free workshops. LAX hopes to recruit the airport workers of the future today. The airport recently hosted something of an open house for dozens of LA students at its annual Job Shadow Day. Anna Marcos was there.
Kira, a bomb-detection dog with the Airport Police K-9 Unit, helped warm up students at this Job Shadow Day at LAX. About 100 middle and high school students spent a day shadowing mentors in every area of airport duty, from operations to airline management to FAA administration, TSA and Customs, and yes, the Airport Police K-9 Unit.
When you do apprehend a suspect, it's always rewarding to bring in a bad guy or locate a dangerous device to keep everybody safe.
What I found interesting today at the LA Airport is that I got to see the different planes and what FAA was about.
LAX does have a Gateways Internship Program in case any of these students are interested in an airport career once they reach high school.
Mentoring at Job Shadow Day gives the student a chance to test drive their career choice, and it also ensures that we have a trained aviation workforce going into the future.
So were there any takers?
I'm kind of stuck to my goal of being a forensic doctor. I wouldn't want to deal with any airplanes. What I wanted to do was become the president.
I would want to be a basketball player and an architect.
So no airplane jobs for you?
Well, I would like to get on a private jet when I'm playing basketball.
I saw the people in the cubicles, and they had like about four computers in each station watching all security, and I thought that was really interesting.
Is that something you might want to do?
Yes.
Make that one potential LAX aviation recruit for the books. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Schools that took part in Job Shadow Day included West Chester High, Orville Wright Middle School, St. Bernard High School, and Albert Monroe Middle School. City crews are added again on a mission to fill potholes in the North San Fernando Valley. Gil Reyes reports on round two of Operation Neighborhood Blitz.
Relief ahead for drivers in North Granada Hills, Porter Ranch, Chatsworth, and Northridge. Pothole repair is on its way if it hasn't arrived already, and residents can thank themselves.
It's a great idea, and it also shows that Mayor Garcetti and his administration are very open and transparent and willing to talk and be with the neighbors and the community.
It's round two of Operation Neighborhood Blitz. A simple idea, really. Instead of searching for problems, the Bureau of Street Services simply asks neighborhood councils where repairs are needed. Crews go to work ASAP.
In a city this big, the people who know are the ones who live and work right there by these streets. You can help us do things faster and better. If we spend less time with city workers trying to find those potholes, that means there's more time they can spend repairing those potholes.
It increases the influence and the power and the participation of the neighborhood councils. It really does bring city services to your doorstep.
The first round launched over the summer filled 15,400 potholes in six months.
When we started the program, we knew that we could create this great collaboration effort, but we didn't know how successful we were going to be.
Residents can also report potholes by calling the city's helpline, 311, or using the My311 app. In Granada Hills, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Street workers are also expected to fill potholes in North Hills, Mission Hills, and Panorama City on the slag of the Neighborhood Blitz. A change in the way LAPD officer-involved shootings are reviewed. Broadway Downtown is taking away a car lane in favor of more pedestrian space. Also, how to respect yet regulate street memorials. These stories and more in City Beat. The Los Angeles Police Commission has voted to adopt new language to existing policy that will allow the commission to consider an officer's decision to pull the trigger to his actions in the moments leading up to the shooting.
Inspector General recommends that this matter be corrected by clarifying the policy to include that adjudicators may consider, quote, "the tactical conduct and decisions leading up to the use of deadly force."
While the commission says it already looks at decisions and actions taken by officers prior to a shooting, Commissioner Robert Saltzman calls the clarification in the language of the policy significant. As Councilmember Jose Wezar's Bringing Back Broadway initiative celebrates its sixth anniversary, work to remove one lane of traffic in favor of expanded pedestrian areas has begun. Phase one, which is expected to be completed by the LA Department of Transportation by summer, is being referred to as the dress rehearsal. That's because quickly installed materials are being used to reconfigure the road from four to three traffic lanes while funding is secured to achieve the permanent build-out of the full-scale project during Phase Two. Councilman Wezar says the project shows the kind of commitment needed to reestablish the historic Broadway corridor as a premier destination for all Angelenos. The LA County Board of Supervisors has approved $4.1 million to pay for the restoration of the historic Fort Moore Pioneer Memorial Monument. While the monument is the property of Los Angeles County, the City of Los Angeles has also earmarked funding for the restoration of this often-forgotten historic resource on Hill Street. The Fort Moore Pioneer Memorial was dedicated on July 3, 1957, to commemorate the site of a Mexican-American war adobe fort. The restoration will likely include the reactivation of a water feature shut off in a 1977 drought. Informal street memorials like this one are commonly embraced as a way to honor loved ones killed on public streets, but can also obstruct the public right of way. That's why Councilman Mitchell Englander has asked the council, which has agreed, to instruct the bureaus of street services and sanitation to establish compassionate guidelines to allow for the display and removal of temporary street memorials. It was a community park that not many families would visit, but that's about to change thanks to a couple of large upgrades. Yana Kaye reports.
14-year-old Ethan Durant is practicing his climbing on this newly-installed rope at the Tarzana Recreation Center.
Thing's really well done, and it's just fun to climb around everything.
And now he'll have plenty of time to climb around as the community introduced two new play structures at the park with a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Three, two, one, go!
It's really revitalizing this recreation center and providing a place for, a safe place for kids to be able to have fun, exercise, and build community.
The two new play structures were made possible by the hard work of the Department of Recreation and Parks and many community members.
I'm full with joy and completion. This was a labor of love. My children grew up at this park. They're now 11 and 14.
One play area, which is about 2,000 square feet, is for kids 2 to 5 years old, and the larger 6,000-square-foot play structure is for kids 5 to 12 years old. Now, what's really great about these two new play structures is that they offer the sun cover so that kids of all ages can play all summer long. Even the big ones.
Yeah, they love it. It's all new, so it's a lot of fun. I like the rubber stuff on the ground. That's pretty cool.
Something new at the park that'll get everyone on their feet. I'm Yana Kaye for LA This Week.
Park officials say they are working on a plan to offer movie nights during the summer. And in this week's list of things to do, a Sunday hike, an exhibit that looks at the history of LA Central Avenue and the San Pedro Art Walk. The hikes led by Griffith Park Ranger Ernie Ibarra for the next few months will be held on Sundays, and the next one will be on Sunday, March 2, at 8:00 a.m. from the Griffith Park Observatory parking lot to Trails Cafe, and then back on the same path. The hike is a 2.5-mile intermediate hike. Bring money to purchase food at the cafe or pack your own meal. The observatory is located at 2800 East Observatory Avenue. Dogs are welcome but must remain on leashes at all times. Details can be found at Ranger Ibarra's Facebook page, which is facebook.com/RangerErnie. Catch a free photo exhibit at the Los Angeles Central Library highlighting the history of African-American musicians and jazz clubs along Central Avenue in Los Angeles. The exhibit, part of the city's month-long celebration of African-American heritage, is on display now through Friday, February 28. Central Avenue was the heart of the African-American community in Los Angeles from the '20s to the '50s and the heart of the rhythm and blues and jazz music scenes. The Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street. For information, go to lapl.org. On the first Thursday of each month, the artists, businesspeople, and entertainers of San Pedro celebrate the arts with an evening of open galleries and studios. Called the San Pedro Art Walk, the monthly event also features street vendors and live music in the downtown San Pedro Arts District. The next San Pedro Art Walk will be Thursday, March 6, from 5 to 9 p.m. between 4th and 8th Streets in downtown San Pedro. Go to firstthursday.com. That's one S.T. Thursday.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. A Guinness record was set recently in downtown LA as construction crews moved forward with the largest continuous concrete pour in U.S. history. Yana Kaye reports.
These green mechanical arms are pouring concrete deep below the ground, laying the foundation for downtown's Wilshire Grand project. But this huge undertaking has also cemented its place in the Guinness World Record for being the largest continuous pour ever conducted.
It means people are betting big on Los Angeles. It's the time to reinvest here, and I think it's just one of many projects that we have downtown and throughout the region that are bringing LA back.
In total, 2,100 truckloads of more than 21,000 cubic yards of concrete were poured over 26 straight hours at this hole at the corner of 7th and Figueroa Streets.
We're going to see a real centerpiece for all of Los Angeles and to continue to challenge ourselves, to continue to push the envelope in directions that downtown LA and the City of LA hasn't been before in the past.
The structure, developed by Korean Air, will be 73 stories and 1,100 feet tall, making it the tallest building west of the Mississippi when it is completed in 2017. Project officials anticipate the hotel will create 11,000 local construction jobs and will pump $80 million in tax revenue into the city's economy. I'm Yana Kaye for LA This Week.
The more than $1 billion project will feature 904-star hotel rooms and offices, restaurants, and retail space. Well, before we go today, we want to take a moment to say good luck and farewell to our station manager, Tony Agani, who is retiring. We want to thank him for over two decades of service to our station and to the City of Los Angeles. Tony, we wish you all the best. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at elacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. It is Tuesday, February 25, and I'd like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Lumenfeld, Bonn, and Buscaino, Stadio, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Corian, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. Left members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, Carrick seconds.
Next is committee resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves, Wezar seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise for our flag salute. Today, we will be led by Mr. Ofero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ofero. If we could run through the agenda?
Mr. President, there's a request by member to continue item 1B to March 4.
Without objection.
Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, cards?
Cards on item 1.
Okay, let's hold that. Mr. Wezar?
Two special, please.
Okay, well, we'll hold 1 and 2. Let's move to the next section on the agenda.
Items 3 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members' specials. I do not see any, so let's prepare to, Mr. Englander? 7 for Mr. Englander. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now that brings us where?
Items 10 through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body.
And there are cards on all items.
Okay, so let's move on then to the next section.
Item 15, on the supplemental agenda, item 15 is an item for which public hearings have been held.
Specials members on item 15. I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 16 and 17 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on both items.
Okay, then that brings us where?
Items 18 and 19 are closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
At this point, yes. And I know one of them, we're definitely going to hear. I'll talk to Mr. Corian about the other one. Okay, where are we now?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange for presentation? The floor is yours, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, want to invite Steve Happer, who's a past president, and his family up here, please. Come on up right now.
Okay, let's have a family get up here.
Give a big hand right there. Steve is owner and broker of Happer Properties. He'd helped numerous clients in the effort to buy housing, which is so important. One of the great days is when we have our first child, or second child. One of the great days, I guess first is when you get married. Let me correct that. No one's listening except one person over here. You get married, you get married, you have a child, and then you get a home, which is so special. Steve's helped people throughout his life. He's the past president of Toluca Lake Chamber of Commerce and serves as the board of directors of the Toluca Lake Homeowners Association on their Public Safety Committee, which I know is so important to all of us, and the Greater Toluca Lake Neighborhood Council. He's also on the St. Peter's Parish Council for St. Peter's Armenian Church, which is so good. I didn't know that, Stephen. He's a resident of Toluca Lake for the past 20 years, and his wife Sandy and their two children, Matthew is right here in Samatha, their daughter. He enjoys golf whenever there's a spare moment, which there's not much of, and he's a devoted member of our community. And the key to our success is the people that we work with, that empower and help, bring about good things in the community. And there's nothing more exciting than Toluca Lake, especially on the first Friday of December, where all the businesses open up in a holiday festive atmosphere, and they walk along Riverside Drive and enjoy in the wonders of the holiday time, visiting friends, family, and others in the beautiful village of Toluca Lake. Steve, I want to salute you because this is the time that you salute when you transition out of presidency. I know you're not going away, which is good, and our city council has signed a commendation, including our mayor, Mr. Garcetti, that salutes everything there. And I want to give this to you because you've worked so hard and continue to work so hard in our community. Steve Happer, give him a big hand, Mr. President.
Well, it's been an honor, wow, it's been an honor serving as president, and the best part of it was working as a team. Some of the directors are here. We work very well together. The new president, Ren Blight.
How are you? Welcome.
Janice Eaton, director.
Give her a round of applause. She does all the hard work.
Tim Hawkins, raise your hand. Kathy Saliba. And there's about 12 of us that work together. We work very closely with the homeowners association, Neighborhood Council, and of course, we couldn't do it without all the support from councilmember Labange and the deputies, Alice, and the whole team over there. So it's been a great honor, and thank you.
Introduce your wife first.
Ah.
Daddy.
All right. My family. My dad, Armin. My wife, Sandy. My son, Matthew.
Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
Has a great-looking family. Great-looking family.
And, Mr. President, we thank you, Steve. Before the family leaves, I want you to stand up right there, Mr. Hawkins, right there. His brother, this is a Marine right here, a Marine, which is good, but very involved in the community, but also his brother played little Jimmy Hawkins in It's a Wonderful Life, your brother Tim. Big hand there, Mr. Hawkins. Good job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Again, thank you, Mr. Labange. Again, thank you, Mr. LaBange. Okay, members, again, thanks, Mr. LaBange. We have a commission appointment, and I think it would be appropriate if we could move to item 10. Let's ask our commissioner to come to the center table, and then we will, we're gonna take some public comment first. Okay, let's start with Sean, come on down, and Mr. John Walsh, and Mr. Herman. Yes, Sean?
Yes, good morning, Mr. President. I support item 10, thanks.
No, thank you. So if we could have Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential, or tweeting at HollywoodDems, capital H. This concerns the city employees' retirement system board. They're the ones that give out the goodies. Remember, when you appoint, and you're gonna, it's gonna be 13, 14, 15 to nothing, when you appoint Ms. Nilza Serrano, you gotta understand that she is just a right arm on the commission for the mayor. That's the way it works. Fine. Saying that, I see no, I've looked into her record, as you know, I look into the records of everybody, because she once put a man in here who's now in prison for kiddie porn, okay? I've looked in here, this is what I'm talking, I'm saying that she does not have any record of kiddie porn, and therefore, we support her. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Folks, when you know that you're gonna speak, make your way to the center aisle faster in the interest of time. If not, I'll start your time before you get at the podium. Okay, Mr. Herman?
As you can see, Ms. Serrano, is this about special interests? Hopefully not. Hopefully, the mayor chose the right person for the right job, but as you heard the president there say, I have to hurry up with this nonsense?
No, you have to speak to the item.
I am, but you told me to hurry to the podium.
No, 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 speak, I'm not gonna debate you, just last time.
Let me continue, please. Thank you. So, Ms. Nilza Serrano, do you have the integrity, the ethics to support Los Angeles, to be American for interests of those of us who are American here? Because special interests has a special place for you in the future. Hopefully, with the greatest morale for public interest, you will serve only this city based on its constituents and not on the padded wallets of those who serve public interests, right, Mr. City Attorney, Hall American?
Okay, good morning. You may want to say a few words about yourself, and let's, then we'll get this show on the road.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for affording me the time to stand here and help you and help serve the city of Los Angeles and the Lakers Board. I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles in Eagle Rock. I grew up in Williamite Homes off of Main Street. I went to Lincoln High School, Cal State LA, and I'm here to help serve at the pleasure of the council and of the mayor.
Thank you. Members, I think we should vote on this appointment. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations. Let's move to item 11, was called special by Antonia Ramirez. Please come forward. Ms. Ramirez, please come forward.
One moment, please. Please start at me at the time. Again, in the rent escrow account programs, you talk about violations, you talk about enforcing your enforced unit, habitability citations. Now, all over LA, you have violations that are affecting all Los Angeles residents when it comes to habitability issues. You have nuisance, public nuisance and private nuisance. You have all forms of noise complaint problems, and yet, your law enforcement, whether it be West Los Angeles Police Department or Rampart, no one enforces the rule of law when the residents have problems with habitability.
Okay, let's stay on the item, please, item 11.
Again, we're talking about enforcing, what does the code enforcement unit?
No, we're talking about the rent escrow account.
Yeah, well, the rent escrow is, again, you piggyback that with the problems of code enforcement, habitability problems, and the Los Angeles housing boards, they're all amalgamated, and they all comprise the same problems of habitability issues. And again, who enforces it? Is it code enforcement or the police department? City attorney? Who enforces the rule of law when it comes to habitability problems? We want quality of life. That means no noise, no noise, no noise. Again, it's a chronic problem. Again, gangbangers, junkies, and wetbacks, it's a chronic problem. It creates, again, a lack of quality in Los Angeles. And again, we ask that the city attorney enforce the rule of law, bring some peace, take away the urban blight and the toxic urban blight.
She is still not talking about the rape.
Okay, let's, that was the only card on this subject. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. In fact, let's go to, we're gonna do 13 first. Okay, 13, Ms. Ramirez and Mr. Walsh. Item 13. Mr. Walsh and Ms. Ramirez.
Was I fast enough for you, or did you start the clock?
Stay on the item.
Well, you keep telling me I'm walking too slow.
No, if you wouldn't sit way in the back when you're gonna speak on every number, you could sit right up here, and it wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to lose your breath.
Oh, so I have to sit where you tell me, damn, where you damn tell me to?
You're not on the subject.
And neither are you. Number 13. Okay, this is the parking lot at LAX. We have the most dangerous airport in the world. People shot down. We have two warring police authorities at that airport and at that parking lot. You have the LA Police, LAPD, versus the special airport police. They're separate, they're equal. It's, we don't want that, that is the problem. Anybody who has been to the airport knows that car break-ins at this parking lot are incredibly high. Go to Crime Mapping LA. Of course, because the, rather, the airport police, what are they doing? They're sleeping on the job. They're defecating on the job, they're doing every, that's why we had the shootout. The parking lot is dangerous. Now, I would like you to give us the list of crimes committed in that parking lot, but they won't give it to you, but I'll give you the list, because I checked. Rape, armed assault, a number of all these serious crimes. You take your life in your hands when you show up at the LAX airport, and that's why I'm saying to the world, go to Glendale. Take a look at Glendale's parking lot and compare it to this wild west of the airport. And believe me, these people up here, they have police escorts when they use the airport lot. The airport lot is a no man's woman's land. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you very much. I say approve the lease with American Airlines Incorporated out LAX only if two of the conditions are met, and that is pilot safety is a priority. Pilot safety is a priority. Two, special parking will be provided free of charge to all our outstanding American Airlines pilots and co-pilots and engineers, and all our gifted hybrid military aviators, and all our highly coordinated, brilliant Los Angeles City chopper pilots and LA County Sheriff pilots. The media can come in too, and all our splendid thrill-seekers, Gillespie daredevil pilots extraordinaire, and again, do something with cleaning up the LAX area. It is a bloody cesspool. Get a couple of bleach bottles and pour the bleach all over the parking lot and let some aroma come out of this, instead of, like you said, defecation and urine. It's, this is embarrassing. Again, and also, most of our pilots, as you know, are military, and I highly recommend this wonderful video, Full Metal Jacket, Full Metal Jacket, because we want to give tribute to our pilots who are military, most of them. God bless the United States military, and God bless our pilots, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on. We're now, Mr. Walsh, if you would begin to make your way to the microphone, the center mic. We're on item 12. Mr. John Walsh, and then we have a James Pugh, is it? James, come up right ahead. Go, yes, sir.
Good morning, honorable council members. James Pugh, representing an adjacent property owner on item number 12, and just would like to say that we fully support the motion that's before you, and hope that you'll approve it today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential. I don't own an adjacent property, so whether, if you vote in favor of this, it's not gonna increase the value of my property, because I don't own any. But remember, everybody has a hidden motivation up here, including me. Okay, number 12 considered is about police facilities, motor transport vacation district, and we just want to say that the police just need to drive a little slower when they pass my neighborhood, because they keep missing the gangsters selling drugs on Hollywood Boulevard. It's because the cars are too well-built and they're going too fast. Slow it down to maybe 50, 60, 55 miles an hour, and maybe, if you have 20/20 vision, you can see the rampant crime in Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll move to item 7. Mr. Englander, if you'd like to start us off on this item.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, this is the annual, or the review for the OPG contract, citywide contracts. If I can ask, Police Department, come forward. We already had this item in public safety, and I know that one of my colleagues has one quick question, so if we could, thank you. And Mr. Sedia.
Welcome, Mr. Sedia.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't want to belabor the good work that was done in the committee, but we have had an ongoing controversy for a period of time with respect to special order 7, and I just want to make sure that as this RFP goes out, that we're very clear that those who are successful in their bids understand the policy, and that there's clarity on special order 7 and where we're at with that.
Good morning. I'm Lieutenant Chris Waters, commanding officer of Commission Investigation Division. With me is Detective Freeben Jones, the detective, the toe coordinator, as well as City Attorney Dan.
Crime Ring.
Crime Ring. Councilman Sedia, it is known that all OPGs are to follow all laws as well as policy and procedures of the Los Angeles Police Department, and they do so at this time.
How are we gonna inform them of that? Of the policy?
As part of the, as part of the contract, they're required to follow all laws and procedures as outlined in the contract, and from time to time, we provide them with the policies and procedures. The OPGs do not independently impound or tow vehicles. There's always a city employee that directs them on what action they're to take and what, how long, or when a vehicle is to be impounded. They cannot do that independently. There's one other item. This item was originally submitted back in December, and we put a timeline on the item starting in January. We're now at February 25th, and we'd like the schedule that's published in the transmittal to be pressed down, cover the time that it's been a council, it's approximately 60 days.
No objection. You're good. Okay, then, members, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, that item is approved. Thank you all for coming.
If we can ask that it go forthwith as well, thank you.
Now we'll do item 14, called special by cards, Ms. Ramirez and Mr. Walsh. Item 14, Ms. Ramirez and Mr. Walsh. No applause.
No applause unless you're white. That was a minority.
Now, let's speak on stuff.
Number 14, categorical exemption. Okay, categorical exemption means you don't have to follow the rules. Anytime you see that in the agenda, you know a deal has end, there's a fix-in. Categorical exemption means that it's a waiving of the rules. At the airport commissioners, they've done nothing. Wait till the FBI report comes out on the shootout. Wait till you see that when that comes out. Parts of it have already been leaked. This is Lawa. Even the name sounds silly. Lawa, remember the word, don't come to Lawa. Glendale. Glendale, your life is not in danger. Extend the term of the new, okay, credentialing system, operations, and maintenance support. This is for a corporation. In other words, if you're hooked in, you get subsidized. Isn't that what we're talking about? You get subsidized if you're a private contractor. That doesn't happen in Glendale or Burbank. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you. Approve this contract with GCR Incorporated only on the condition that they will hire qualified military veterans and legal law-abiding citizens, and not hire criminal illegal felons or Latino Hispanic gangbangers and/or junkies.
Stay on the item.
I am staying in the item.
No, you're not. Come on, Ms. Ramirez.
Well, come on, Mr. Weston.
No, stay on the item.
Mr. Wesson, we're trying to not deviate from the item, but you know, sometimes it's a little tricky there, you know?
No, no, no. Speak to the item, or you forfeit your time.
I speak to the item, and again, what we need, it says credentialing system and maintenance support. We do need support of our legal law-abiding citizens and military veterans, so please hire that maintenance support and all those that they will contract with and not violate the immigration law.
She is not talking about this one.
And I thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, we're gonna move now, members, to item number 1, called special by Sean. Please come down. Sean Murphy. How much time does Ms. Ramirez have left? None? And what about Mr. Walsh? None? So if I could get Sean, and I think- So if I could get Sean and I think it's Arena Castillo, please come to the mic. Yes, sir.
Yes, I don't want to support. Thank you.
I'm coming to represent my two adult children. They own the property, Wes Adams. Sixteen or two Wes Adams in Los Angeles. They have two units. One unit, it's, the business is owned by them. And the other unit was being rented. Okay, on the A unit, number A, is the unit that we're responsible for. In 2010, I made a double payment. And later, I realized, it was a double payment because my, the manager of the shop had sent the payment and I had sent one because I was on my way out of the country. My son got cancer. He was doing a master's in Barcelona. And he got cancer and I had to go over there. So it was really, you know, a bad timing for me. But anyway, I did send the check and the city returned one check, one payment. But at the same time, there was a confusion with the city and then they charged us the penalty. So I wanted to, in other words, Unit A, which is our unit.
Like to do right now, Mr. Parks, your deputy would like to.
But we need to ensure that the answer on this is not, I don't want to pay. And so if you could go to the rope and talk with Building and Safety, they will try to work something out with you. But I don't think, in dealing with this, that they've been clearly showed that they've sent the material to the right place. The issue is there's a cost because it was delinquent. But again, they will try to be flexible with you, but the answer is not, I just don't want to pay.
Very good. So if you'd want to go inside here, there's a representative from Building and Safety. And we could, could we hold this on the, we continued one week?
And that's till, that's till March 4th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we meet on March 4th?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for your head bob there. All right, next item.
And also, Mr. President, for item 1A, Department of Building and Safety reports that item can be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been rescinded.
Very good. Received and filed. Do we need a vote on that?
No, without objection is fine.
Without objection, very fine. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Item two called Special by Councilor Weezer.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, this is an item that will move forward to establish a business improvement district in the Arts District. Now, I want to say that there are actually two proposals and this one has reached us sooner than the other. But I want to thank the people who involved in both bids because it shows that both of you are concerned and want to make sure that we have a lively and safe Arts District. I want to thank in particular Dillip Bhavani and Yuval Bar-Zimmer for working into the late hours last night along with my Chief of Staff, Paul Habib, that we've come up with a compromise so that we no longer would need competing bids. But this item here can move forward, so the sooner the better. The Arts District has been without a bid for some time and we want to make sure we get this out as soon as possible to continue the great work that the bids do for our community. So thank you for everyone involved. Thank you, Dillip, and thank everybody else there. It is a wonderful community and this bid is a very important piece of that puzzle to continue making the Arts District a great place. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I have one card, this, Mr. Herman, please. Is this you? Mr. Herman, spelled C-O-N-S-T-I-N-G. No comment? Thank you. No cards? Open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. For this item, council should close the public hearing and the ballot tabulation will be announced at tomorrow's meeting.
Right, then we're going to close the public hearing. Now, and without objection, we'll have the tabulation of these votes tomorrow. Correct, Madam Clerk?
President.
Thank you so much. Next item.
Item 16 called Special for Cards.
Mr. Herman, you are standing. Your card on 16, please.
Such public interest. When we have $50 million in payment for obligations commenced before March 5th of this year to protect the city's interests in what? Negotiating to execute a toileting agreement with the CRA. The CRA is dead. Why is this item under item number 16 saying that we should negotiate? Once again, all of you in Los Angeles, the fraud, the abuse of CRA funds that are monies, Mr. Krikorian, monies from the state for the purpose solely for this item. So let's not negotiate any deal here until everything is exposed and transparent as to what the hell are we talking about here? Because $55 million in chump change to all of you in Los Angeles may not bother you now, but what is the impact, the effect of this charge, this cost for toileting agreements? Go to 1800 Hope Street in Los Angeles and you will find what public interest is all about. Provide homeless toileting for people who need toileting.
I'm trying to get the impression that this is a tolling agreement which is being litigized? What? And I don't understand if this is some sort of toll roll or something like that. Oh, don't worry, general public comment is coming up. Now, you're speaking to your mic, Krikorian.
He is not.
Don't worry.
Thank you. I do worry. Make your point and direct it to the City Council Los Angeles. Continue.
I am, but I am. I will. It will get interesting, general public comment, but I don't know about this paying off tolling.
Donna Paramon.
Yeah, here we go. We like, I know you're going to come up with some great big double talk. I know exactly what this is with the CRA. I don't know if this is money that the CRA owes us and that we'll be using for toll roads or some other type of thing or, but anyway, what we want to do is find out exactly, is the CRA back or is this money coming back from CRA? Because definitely what we don't want to have any dealings with the CRA with their fraud and abuse and all the money that they stole from the state of California. So, so I'm hoping that you come up with something, especially since we can't even have our video conferencing. So please tell us exactly what you're dealing with CRA because I just can't see the CRA coming back and I can't see our mayor having anything to do with the CRA. So I'm sure now that you'll, after I've done with speaking, you'll come up and say exactly that they, we're not spending money on the CRA and blah, blah, blah. So, okay, so I'll let you do that. Thank you. I don't like the CRA.
John Walsh. John, you're out of time, so wait for public comment. That completes the cards on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. Next item. This will be noted for cards. You're out of time. Daniel Gross, pass.
Dr. Tom Williams, Sierra Club, Angeles Chapter, Water Committee. We're quite concerned regarding boat traffic on the LA River. We'd like to have item E under this resolution removed so that there would be no access, formal access to the river. Yeah, for single persons, maybe, but to establish a boat launching and hopefully receiving pad within the area is not a good thing. We're also quite concerned about identification of funding options for a permanent and expanded area, authority, actually. And we would like to see how that conforms with a 2014 program. Why are we looking for identify funding options for a permanent and expanded area when it's only the 2014 program? So please remove item E from this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Herman, you're out of time after this comment. Thank you, Mr. Herman.
No, thank you. And thank thousands of you in Los Angeles. Everyone who understands what a debt ceiling is, this is something more important because we're talking about ability to make a minor river alteration such as debris hazard, removal of small, let me get it, small or small, small rocks. Thank you for passing by, sir. Small rocks, non-nated foliage trimming. Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance has always been a crucial crisis throughout Los Angeles because as you already know, there is no money for services, no monies for programs, no money for activities, and all for public interest. When we talk about Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Sedia, relative to authorization for the Mountains Recreation and Conservatory Authority, MRCA, to conduct the Los Angeles River recreational zoning program. Let's have a study here better, folks. Let's spend millions to billions to trillions of dollars on a study. That way, every person in Los Angeles, all of you, all of you, anyone who has an interest in recreation, is this appropriate? Can we really manifest the idea again for what? Hours of operation, debris and hazards for removal of small rocks and relocations. Let's assure ourselves this is all under state regulations to touch a habitat for humanity.
Sean Murphy of St. Charles Community.
Yeah, thank you. LA River's good. As long as we get the bike trail going on the river, I support this item, Tom.
Thank you very much, Sean. We have Chief Ranger Fernando Gomez. If you could just come forward, say hello to us. This is the Mountains Recreation and Conservatory Authority, one of the great public servants of California. Just give us a brief, chief.
Good morning, everyone. Again, this is MRCA, something that we've actually done on the LA River. We believe in the river. We believe that bringing education to the river will actually bring other good things to the LA River. It's a river that's alive. It's a river that needs to be actually, a lot of attention is to be put onto. And that's something that we have actually taken upon us. Again, if the city approves this for us to take it on, again, we will definitely show what the river, and again, this is something that the city of LA has actually wanted. Over 6,000 people who participated in these programs can say again that they want this. So thank you so much and be free of any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Chief, thank you and your team all the way. Appreciate, say hello to Mr. Edmondson. No other speakers on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes, forthwith. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings council to closed session items, item 18 and 19.
Mr. Krikorian, could you give, Chairman of the Committee?
Yeah, as to number 19, we should have a brief presentation in closed session. Number 18, I think, is unrelated to budget and finance.
Very good. So sergeants, please prepare the chambers for executive session. I do. Hold on a second, sergeants. Hold, the city attorney has redirected me. What card do you have there, Officer of the Law, Mr.? I don't have anything for 18. I have no cards. No cards. Okay, so prepare the chambers. Thank you, our guest here today. It's executive session. Mr. City Attorney, will you make the formal announcement?
Counsel can go into closed session pursuant to the government code.
run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, KF5060, watch three.
5060, 5060, watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over sixteen thousand acres of parkland, with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than one hundred eighty community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Pal.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and then struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Grill Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed by the parents. The guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. L A Parks dot org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Pal.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five nine two F five oh six zero watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10 p.m. until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, up to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as the Grill Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to you by the parents, it's, uh, guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural or recreation activity.
And that's our message is, uh, not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they, uh, they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to-
So we're back in session, Mr. City Attorney? Okay, all right. So now, oh, first let me ask, uh, what else is before this council, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, let's, uh, go through that. Mr. Barajas, please come forward. Mr. Herman, Dr. Williams, and whoever gets there first is the first one. Brian, come on.
Yeah. Um, so today, um, I'm gonna be turning in this, uh, leaflet. It's called Impeach. Now, the quote is from Lyndon LaRouche, and this quote is right now being circulated at a radio station in Washington DC. It goes the following. Quote, "My name is Lyndon LaRouche, and I'm concerned with the crisis which faces us. We have two crises: We have a crisis of a breakdown inside the US economy and the suffering that that means. On the other side, we're on the verge of a great war, thermonuclear war, which, if it occurs, could be the extermination of the human species," or something approximating that. "We have to eliminate President Barack Obama because as long as he's in power and as long as he's exercising dictatorial powers, he no longer allows the Congress to pass legislation. He makes it himself. He's a dictator. We have to get him out of office. I'm sure if we remove Obama from office, we will find that we will not have a thermonuclear war." Now, I think, uh, the other comment I should make, I sent emails to the background of the Nazi regime that's taking place in Ukraine. And the problem, and I think I find, is that a lot of people don't understand what that means. If thermonuclear World War III, if the British Empire, the Queen herself, wants this to go down, it will eliminate the species which she wants desperately. I suggest we throw Wall Street to the curb.
Thank you, thank you. So Mr. Herman, followed by Dr. Williams, come on, Doctor, uh, followed by Stephanie Campbell, and then I have a Sabalas Refugio, I can't make up the first name, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council, but also Sierra Club Angeles Committee, uh, Angeles Chapter Subcommittee for Fracking Oil and Gas. We have a problem in L.A. We've grown up a lot since the 1960s and before. We're not the same as we were portrayed, and there will be blood. California has changed, but the City of Los Angeles needs to revise their oil and gas ordinances. Why? Because the oil and gas companies are still trying to play cowboy at the Fairfax area. Oh, Beverly Center, there's a problem there. There's a problem at Pico and Genesee. There's a problem at Adams and Gramercy. There's a problem at the Alanco site at 23rd, Jefferson and Budlong. All of these have problems. I faced a problem in 1985 when the blowout at the Ross store put 22 people in the hospital. It was a blowout from a badly abandoned well. We need to change the ordinances and make the oil companies good neighbors. Good neighbors? Freeport has not been a good neighbor. They have actually lied in neighborhood council presentations in the presence of the boards. So what can we expect? There Will Be Blood was a good example. We need to change the ordinances for the City of Los Angeles' oil and gas operations and the zoning administrator's criteria, conditions, and method for consideration of any oil and gas operations within the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie Campbell, uh, Mr. Sabalas, Daniel, go ahead.
I long for justice, I long for justice, for all of you Americans given the seriousness of cha- of changes that strike at the very callous heart of what it means to be a political official and administrative of our government in Los Angeles. Is it best interest of the people? I long for justice, I long for justice, that corruption in California has become a practice and insult by you to rob the government and us Americans. We, the people, I long for justice. Fraud, bribery, accepting gifts, kickbacks, receiving money, laundering, all this conspiracy to deceive the American people. It's here in Los Angeles, as the gunman ran around somewhere that you couldn't even find, mistaken identity. Again, conspiracy, this is the name of betrayal, betrayal of the public that threatens the integrity of our institutions of government, that renders service programs and activities. For I long for justice, I long for justice, an explosion of corruption by Jose Wezar, by Mr. Kogarian, by Mr. Price, by those of you who are involved in government, who talk about speed trains. But then again, the outcry is about the public, for the public has spoken. We don't need racism here. We do not need racism here. Herb, get it? No racism, because Napoleon had a status just as you.
Thank you, okay. Stephanie Campbell, no Stephanie, Daniel, you want to come forward? Uh, is it a Sabalas? Last name Sabalas?
I think they took off, I think, I'm not sure.
Go right ahead, uh, Daniel.
Yeah, hi there. Good, uh, good news from Mike Fuer and Nuri Martinez about the prostitution crackdown. The problem is, six months ago, I brought to Ms. Nuri, uh, Martinez's office, a prostitution problem with underage children. Uh, these are in and around the Sepulveda Basin. This young lady had a child, I believe she was about 18 at the time, while living in the Sepulveda Basin. No response from CD, uh, six, or your office, shortly after she took o- office. This young girl is definitely under 18, also had a child. Um, there's a big-time underage prostitution problem in and around Burbank and Sepulveda. These kids live in the Sepulveda Basin. I did bring it to your office's attention. If you'd like to know more, I will fill in more. Um, also, again, an automotive business with a dog breeding license, uh, for pit bulls, as if, um, any council district doesn't have enough pit bulls, an automotive business now has a permission to breed and sell them. And they have, uh, this automotive business has a license to breed and sell Chihuahuas. The problem is, there's six dogs there, and, uh, you're gonna have not only more animals in your district, uh, your expenses to run the shelters are gonna go through the roof, and eventually somebody's gonna get mauled, and, uh, when that happens, we, we have documentation that we have notified the city in writing about this problem. I mean, what's gonna happen when a seven-year-old kid gets mauled in this area by pits in the street, and we could trace it back to the business? You know, that's why we put these things in writing. If anybody from the city wishes to meet about that, let me know. But also, very, very concerned about the prostitution of children with or without pimps in and around Burbank and Sepulveda. Uh, there's a whole community that's going on there that you may be aware of, but you may not have, but infants are being born in and around the Sepulveda Basin, and that is bad news. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Daniel. So, uh, Sarah Doherty, would, would, no applause, Mr. Herman. Sarah Doherty, please come forward if you're here. Sarah? Okay, Donna Pierman? Sean?
Okay, uh, let's see, uh, first I want a, a warning. Two-thirds of the plan could be wiped off by Obama's actions. Every man, woman, and child can be endangered for the newest thing he's doing on getting out of Afghanistan. And, okay, next, uh, fifty, uh, I want to talk about the CRA. $55 million for the CRA projects to finish it. Now keep on, uh, asking more and more. It's gotta stop. No more money for the CRA. Uh, we gotta get rid of the CRA and just cut it off as a loss. I want to speak to that- I want to speak to that attorney that represented people with the free speech. Our case is a better one to follow. Closing, there's ADA violation, closing video conferencing in Van Nuys. Video conferencing denies elderly, the elderly, disabled, and people with illness the right to speak. It's easier, it's an easier one to win, taking care of the one with the video conferencing. Please contact me at City Hall if you're interested in taking this case. We want to get the most out of our tax dollars, and a lot of money could be spent there. It could have been used to reopen video conferencing. It would help thousands of people in the San Fernando Valley. Miriam can't come here downtown because of the bad air. It's bad for her asthma and a long travel, two hours here and two hours back, and no restrooms. It's bad for telling people the San Fernando Valley to come here, especially the disabled and people with asthma. Ms. Attorney? Well, any attorney will get our video conferencing back. It's the people's freedom of speech are being eroded. Or any attorney willing to take the case.
Thank you, thank you. So if I could again call for Sean, I think it's Refugio Sabalas, Sarah Doherty, John Walsh, Antonio Ramirez. Okay, Sean, go right ahead.
I got a solution for you. Do general public comment first. Do not put us outside for closing. Do the closing after the general public comment.
Next, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Come to our website, find out the whole Calderon scandal. Ex-mayor of the city fined by FPPC. I have it on my website. Find out who the ex-mayor is and why the LA Times hasn't done the story. And remember, we have stopped all construction permits in Hollywood with our lawsuit. But what's the most important thing here is while we were outside, we were monitoring the LA Times. The LA Times, and you can find, this will be on my website soon. The LA Times reported there was a gunman on the roof of this building about 45 minutes ago. You know what I'm talking about. The reporter was Kate Mather. It created a mini freak-out. Fortunately, NBC TV and Andrew Blankstein, who used to be at the LA Times, has now found out it never happened. It was a false alarm triggered by the journalistic garbage of the LA Times. There was no person on, you know what it was? It was a worker. I mean, the vomitous LA Times to start a rumor like this? I'm telling you right now, you know what happened here. And it was the LA Times, despicable. It will be on our website soon. We will tell you that the person behind the Calderon mess, who was the squealer? His name was Rocky Rushing. It's only on our website. The, all the property in LA because of our lawsuit, which shitcanned the Hollywood community plan, all property in LA is now, in Hollywood, is worth about half of what it was before.
Stop the applause.
To HollywoodHighlands.org, and you will find the truth. Not the garbage you get from the LA Times and from the city council. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Sabalas, Sarah Doherty, Ms. Ramirez. Ramirez, please come forward.
West LA Police Department, enforce the rule of law. Start honoring the citizen's arrest. Issue citations where legally warranted. You are legally mandated to hand victims a valid police report and assess all vandalism, mail theft, property damages, and gang stalkings. West LA Police Department, you have failed to provide equal protection under the law, due process rights. You arbitrarily choose whom you will serve and protect, and you provide preferential treatment to the criminals. Furthermore, you have incited mob lynchings, bullying, further crimes, invasion of privacy, criminal harassment, mail theft, and gang stalkings at the Wilshire Marquis, located at 10535 Wilshire Boulevard, LA, California, 90024. This chronically noisy, unsafe, expensive, junky, and crime-infested full-service building harbors nosy criminal and pedophile residents, and they are in condo units 504 and 605 and 704 and Deck 05 and 1604 at L. All their co-accomplices, Latino gang-banging employees, they are Hector, Lionel, Misael, Luis, Jose, and Lesvin. And the two cutthroat employees, the black cutthroats, they are Awat and Antenna. And again, we are asking that they, these dirty cops, be sanctioned, arrested, and fired. Sergeant Abbott, Duke, Walker, McCarthy, Mark Durell, Chris Roxdale, Detective L. Smith, and Detective Keith Thomas, and Officer Kirkland and Officer Barone at L, with no pension whatsoever. And again, the Wilshire Marquis and several of the high-rise buildings on the Westwood Wilshire Corridor and UCLA are gang-infested, junky-infested, and it is a cesspool. It wasn't like 20 years ago when I went to UCLA. Again, the Marquis, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, Sid, you came in late and put your card in when I had general public comment already going on. And you know better. I don't know, who's Jeffrey Solomon? Raise your hand. Jeffrey, you're new, and because of that, we're gonna give Sid a reprieve. But when you come here and you want to speak in general public comment, turn in your card immediately. Once I begin the general public comment, I normally do not take new cards. So Jeffrey, come up, and Sid, if you could work your way behind him. So Jeffrey, go right ahead.
My name is Jeffrey Solomon. I've been 70 years in Los Angeles and loving it. I love my councilmen. They've always represented me properly. My father's name was Abraham. My mother's name was Esther, and she died of breast cancer. I'm running, walking in the Revlon. But what's really important to me is that I've been appointed to the City of Los Angeles... Actually, I'm the ambassador to the City of Los Angeles World's Fair, which will be here 2020 to 2022. We're expecting 100 million people. I'm asking Mike Bonin, or have asked Mike Bonin to help out because it's from the airport. It is off, you know, his area goes from the airport to the Pacific Palisades and from the ocean to the 405. This is gonna be very, very big. They just reported this morning, well, actually, you know, the state of California, we borrowed $40 billion from the federal government for, to be able to handle transportation in California, and we're paying it back by, we increased sales tax by one-half, 1% to pay this back over 30 years. So we have the cash. What we don't have is the city council helping us through. And when they see this as reality, for at March 10th, we're having our final executive meeting. And then on, we're having what's called crowdfunding starting on April 9th, is when the last red car came off the tracks in 1961. And now we're starting it like a phoenix in its own ashes. And we'll be going from crowdfunding from April 9th in West Hollywood, okay, from April 9th all the way to July 9th. And that will be raising money for, we'll be selling tickets. This is really gonna be something very special. Last year, with the City of Los Angeles made $42 billion from people traveling here. That ain't nothing but a hill. That ain't no hill for a stepper. And we is the stepper.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Sid, where are you? I received another late card that I'm not familiar with, so I'm gonna afford Ms. Harris the opportunity, if she's here to speak. I just got this. Sid, go ahead.
Thank you for the chair. Except that I was in time. Sergeant in arms, there was no cars there.
Hey, if I don't get it, it doesn't count.
Thank you for the reprieve. To the council, I just want to bring some good news is that we've done our second phase regarding the project on San Vincent Court. We're heading to the third plan check. We'd like to thank the DOT, especially Jim Kay, the supervisor, and Mike Naimi, who diligently gave us a green light on the report regarding that project. And we're just waiting to tie it up, the loose ends, and hopefully, within a week or two, to present the full package so it goes in front of the commission and hopefully, approval, and then the project will take off after that. We're optimistic, and I hope that stays the course. On another note, that I've been working over almost a year while I took on this responsibility of getting this project on its way is that we've noticed there was the smoking and non-permitted alcohol consumption in the area. I brought this up vigorously in front of the LAPD in numerous levels. But I want to thank Nadine Hernandez, which is the aggregate of Captain Orc, is that for the first time after this municipal court was adopted back in 2010, ordinance 41.5B subsection 18, for the first time, it was ticketed into the alley was last week, approximately two or three tickets, and one ticket the other day. It's a welcome news that this ordinance should have some teeth. The police officers were reluctant to ticket the individuals who were smokers and heavy smokers in the alley and in the dining areas. The other major issue is the drinking, consumption of alcohol on non-permitted businesses, which all these little, small businesses surrounds that LA. We hope that the city council and the district pays more attention and put a stop to this and direct the vice department to do more diligent work. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Sid, Ms. Harris. And I saw you earlier. Here, come on. I don't know if this is a late card. Please, Ms. Harris, come forward. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank all of you. I am the Secretary of the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council, and I'm a resident of Solano Canyon. I am here to speak on behalf of First Nations leaders, community members, stakeholders, ecosystem stewards, and just general community who cares about the Los Angeles State Historic Park. I believe that Ms. Stephanie Campbell, who is not here any longer, had come to let you know that State Parks plans to have a meeting on March 13th of this year to take not public comment, but rather to unveil the permanent design, which will begin to be implemented at the end of March. I'd like to let you all know, and especially our councilmen in District 1 and in District 13, that it has come to our attention that private commercial revenue generation is active on this public land, and it is part of an unstated new policy of State Parks. It has not been subject to public approval. Now, I know that you don't have jurisdiction over State Parks. However, I would urge especially the representative here from the city attorney's office to consider assessing what your jurisdictional responsibilities are in upholding city code with regards to sound and light and invasion into residential neighborhoods surrounding the park. We urge you as city representatives to either assure the public that State Parks will not allow commercial use that violates Los Angeles Municipal Code, or that you would consider to issue a continuance to postpone implementation of the new design at the Los Angeles State Historic Park. We believe that State Parks is obligated to resubmit their master plan and related environmental impact reports to the appropriate agencies because they may well be out of CEQA compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, what's before this body at this time?
Counsel has motions for posting referral.
Okay, they're posted, and they are referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements? Announcements? If I could ask everyone, Mr. Sedia?
Only to announce the presence of the president of the Mexican-American Bar Association PAC, Felipe Basencias with us, one of California's top attorneys.
Good to see you. Okay, if we could all rise? Everyone in council chambers, please? Okay, I'm gonna look to my right, to Mr. Parks', Mr. Caretz's side. Do we have any adjourning motions to my right? Any adjourning motions to my left? Seeing none, this council is adjourned.